I left my iPad in there.
Call the meeting to order. Will everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody coming out on this rainy day. Welcome to the board meeting. Guess we'll go start with Mr. Gilman.
Randy Gilman, Assistant Superintendent Elementary.
Tammy Cardona, Assistant Superintendent Secondary.
Jim Shalou, Director.
Jamie Willis, Incoming Administrative Assistant.
Sandy Manchella, Board Secretary.
Vicki Hanson, Board President.
Nisha Patel, Superintendent.
Judy Smith, Board Vice President.
Carol Yant, Board Member.
Crystal Hargis.
Kelly Brock, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources.
Declan Fitzpatrick, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
John Stewart, Chief Financial Officer.
All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes from June 16th and June 23rd. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion. Aye.
Yes. Aye. The next item on the agenda, 2.4, is approval of the agenda for today, July 21st, 2020.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is 3.1, Communications Patron Comments. Mr. Gilman.
Yes, we have three different comments this evening. I'd like to remind our speakers that problems involving a particular identifiable employee and/or students are reserved for executive session. Only items from the posted agenda may be discussed. A three-minute time period will be allowed per speaker. A warning will be given after two and a half minutes, and the Vice President of the Board will be the timekeeper. First, we have Shelley Kurtz, who wants to speak about the reentry plan.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for taking time to listen to me this evening. My name is Shelley Kurtz. I'm a parent in the Fox School District. I have an incoming third grader who will be entering school in the fall. And I have spent a lot of time the last couple of days reading through the plan. I've read through all the FAQs, I've read through all the notes, and have spent some time looking at other plans in other districts as well. And a couple of the concerns that I just wanted to kind of bring to the board around the virtual learning. So when we talk about all-in or all-out, what concerns me is that what is that virtual learning going to look like if I choose the all-in option and my child still has to do some sort of virtual learning? So, sorry. You know, in the spring, when we did the virtual learning, the resources just weren't there. It was unstructured, learning was difficult. I am in a two-parent working household. I cannot prepare virtual learning for my third grader. How am I supposed to, in a two-parent working household, educate my third-grade child in a public school setting? That should not be my responsibility. Now I'm being having to choose between, do I have a two-parent working household? Or do I have to stay home now and educate my child in a public school setting? This hybrid model is not a plan. It is a let's wait and see approach, and let's wait and see what happens. And what as a parent am I supposed to do? It just doesn't seem like it fits what we're trying to accomplish as parents. You know, as working parents, again, I'm struggling on how I'm going to educate my child in the fall. A third grader cannot educate himself. I have to have somebody to educate him. So again, you know, the struggles of a working parent. I can't prepare my child for school in the fall. I can't prepare myself to prepare for school in the fall. I don't know what we're going to do. Again, it's a wait-and-see approach. Choices are great. I love that we have the choices of the parents who decided they want to have all virtual learning, that's great. But the choices should be all-in or all-out. I shouldn't have to have this sit-and-wait approach, again, and wait to find out how my child is going to be educated in the fall. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teri Edwards, also wants to talk about the reentry plan.
Just gonna read it. Good evening. I'm the parent of an incoming freshman and senior in the Fox District. Well, I can appreciate the position that you all are in and the effort is taken to devise a plan in these unprecedented times. I feel that I need to advocate for my child and voice my concerns with this all-in plan. While you are calling this plan "all-in," it is anything but. It is a hybrid of an in-person virtual and virtual learning, and I have several concerns with this hybrid learning model. First, students will be in a classroom less than 50% of the school week. I believe strongly that this lack of face-to-face learning will negatively impact their education. Face-to-face learning is essential for processing and comprehending. The expectation of a child of any age to self-motivate and efficiently manage time is unreasonable. Putting the onus of responsibility on the child or the parent is not appropriate. It's not the way our schools are structured. As a family where both parents work outside of the home full-time, my children do not have the luxury of a home motivator or instructor. This plan will not work for children with families such as ours. My next concern involves the psychological health of many students. I cannot even begin to express the fear I have with children who are struggling with mental health. The impact of being home, often alone, for three days a week could be detrimental. This model will further isolate these children who are already desperately in need of structure and support. They will be expected to be on a computer regardless of supervision, which could open them up to further potentially destructive and dangerous influences. I acknowledge my next concern impacts a very small percentage of the students in this district. It involves the senior class and planning for their future. Only two days of instruction per week is not sufficient for them to have the interaction with their teachers and utilize the resources necessary to explore colleges, scholarships, and career opportunities. My final point is that many families are not just facing tough decisions as a result of this reentry plan. They're facing impossible ones. They are being asked to choose if they can continue working and pay for childcare for those virtual days, knowing that this additional cost will eliminate funds for necessities like medication, bills, and even food on the table. That assumes they can even find a provider willing to accept a child into their care during times as these. This last-minute approach of phases, it's not how childcare works. They're not going to accept children in that situation. I said, I do want to reiterate that I appreciate your time and your considerations, and do believe that you are looking out for our children's best interest. However, the reentry plan needs to be reevaluated to truly include a plan that is all-in. Thank you.
Finally, this evening, we have Angela Barbarota and Margie Passmore want to talk about the NEA donation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angela Barbarota. I'm the new Fox NEA President, and Margie Passmore is our NEA Treasurer. And tonight, we are here on behalf of NEA. As we navigate our way through these uncertain times, NEA understands the importance of assisting our district with this. With this in mind, we would like to present the board with a $500 donation to help purchase personal protective equipment for the staff of Fox C6. We hope, albeit a humble amount, that this contribution will aid in the efforts to help protect our staff. As we move forward, please know NEA is always here to support our Fox family. Thank you for your time.
The next item on the agenda is Board Member Reports. Dr. Patel, you want to start?
Sure. I'm gonna keep mine pretty brief because I'm gonna be doing the reentry plan presentation later on, so I'll go through a lot of that at that point. But I do want to make a special note today is the last meeting for our Administrative and Board Secretary, Sandy Manchella. So I want to thank you publicly for all of your years of service here and just being such a sounding board to me and for all that you've done. So I truly, truly appreciate, and we're going to be sorely missed. And she loves attention, so I just couldn't. This was my last chance to ever do that to her. So there you go, publicly. And then also welcome Jamie Willis, because she will be taking over Sandy Manchella's spot, and I'm very, very excited to work with you, Jamie, as well.
That's all I've got right now.
Okay, I guess we'll go on.
Yeah, just a couple of things. We're wrapping up our last week of virtual summer school, and we've had good participation in that. So really, I want to thank Kristin Darnell for all her hard work on that. Principals are working very hard with their building leadership teams and preparing for entering the new school year. And so that's, they've been, you know, visiting with teachers and grade levels, and there's been a lot of things to think about there, so I really want to send my appreciation to them as well for that. And finally, I want to thank you to Judy West and Mona Hancock von Trapp for their work on the Simpson Memorial. We had a meeting the other day, and they've done a lot of work on that to kind of memorialize Mr. Simpson. So looking forward to seeing how that turns out.
So I have a few things this evening. First of all, the Secondary PLC Institute, that's something that we've been doing for the last four years. That completed today. We had 80 administrators and teachers working with Robin Green and I the last two days. We did have to do it virtually this time, but we did allow a lot of time for teachers to work together and building groups to work together for their planning for this upcoming school year. So that was a great success. Also, just a reminder, Sunday, graduation. It is a thing, and it's gonna definitely happen. Fox graduation is at 11:00 at the Family Arena, and then the Secman graduation is at 4:00 at Family Arena. So excited to finally see that come through. And I would really like to publicly thank Robin Green. I know she puts a lot of work in behind the scenes. They've had a lot of summer PD, and I don't want to, Declan may be touching on this later, but they have had a lot of teachers logging in and doing summer PD, and I think that's just gonna be huge all around virtual learning and how we can better service our kids this upcoming year. And then I finally want to thank our parents. I know that there's been a lot of worry and struggle over the plan and what that looks like, and I thank them for their support. And I really thank them for their questions, too, because that's, we have to work together to figure out how we move forward as a district and how we support our kids. So thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Sandy for all her hard work. She's been there like a soldier all the way through and had to deal with a lot of different, you know, Board Secretary and the Superintendent Secretary is kind of an interesting job because they have to serve two masters. They're serving the Board of Education, and then they're serving the Superintendent. And that's not always an easy thing to do. And so I appreciate the work that you've done. Best wishes in your new position. A couple of things. I just want to share a personal experience I had with COVID. My grandson, who lives with me, came home two weeks ago, I guess it was, and he says, I've been exposed to somebody that has COVID. Now, let me tell you what happens when that takes place. First of all, he had to go get tested immediately, and then he was sent home, and he was told that he needed to stay quarantined, quarantine himself. So he was in his room until the test results came back. The test results came back nine days later. So he was in his room for nine days. We have protocols where I work, if you're exposed to somebody who knows that they were exposed to somebody that has COVID, you have to stay away from work until it's determined if that person was infected or not. Well, that put me at home for nine days. Had it turned out that he was infected, then we all would have been home for another four, and then we would have had, I would have had to have gotten tested. This is the most complicated thing I've ever seen in my entire life. But I do know this, folks. It's gonna take a community effort for us to knock this thing down. I mean, we're gonna have to get smart about this, and we're gonna have to fight it. We're at war with a bug right now, and we're gonna have to work hard to win that bug, to beat that bug. And I don't know if wearing a mask in Walmart's gonna make a difference, but let's, my attitude is, let's just try to find out, because there's one thing that I want more than anything else. I want my first grader to go back to school next year, and I want my senior, who graduated this year, to go to college. And so let's try to work to try to fight this thing and beat it, because we've beat other things before, and we can beat this one, too. One other thing, I want to thank Declan for providing this data relative to how our performance is. And there's a couple of things on there that are pretty striking. One is, is that based on this data, on the MAP results for the students that took the MAP, our students in middle school have lost their advantage over the state average almost completely. And it's been, this has been going on for two years, and the fact that this, I'm just finding out about this, concerns me. Generally speaking, our students in the Fox School District consistently through eighth grade, generally speaking, performs, up 10% to 15% of our kids perform proficient and above over the state average. In our middle schools now, we have pretty much bottomed out. And what's really concerning me is that even just by our sixth grade being in the middle school has seemed to impact, if I'm understanding the data, the other grade levels, too. I would like for us to do a pretty serious assessment of what's going on there, why that's happening, and we need to put an action plan, because if our kids that are in middle school now can't recover from this, they've lost essentially significant achievement. And so it needs to be something that we approach pretty seriously, and we need to have an action plan put together on how we're, this is a good time to do it, too, because the truth is, what I'm talking about, by the way, doesn't include any data from this past year. There's no data in there. This is for the previous two years. But this is a good time to start working on that and solve that problem. Our district has always been a well-above-the-state-average-performing school system, because our teachers have worked hard to make that happen. I don't know if it's structural problem. I have no idea what it is, but it's the same teachers that were teaching our kids in sixth grade, and all of a sudden, they get to middle school, and they've lost all their advantage, and that's just not a good thing. And so we need to work on that. That's all I've got. All right, and I made a mistake up here. Michelle Chamberlain is here with us virtually, and I don't know if she can be heard if she wants, Michelle, she's here on the computer. So I neglect, hi, Michelle. So I, too, want to thank Sandy. She kind of keeps us on line and track, makes sure we follow proper procedure, and she helps us with everything, keeps us organized, reminds us of date, and you're gonna be greatly missed, very professional, very calm. That's good. That's good. So thank you. My main comment is, you know, the plan, I think the difficulty for all of us is the uncertainty. The fact that it has to be a responsive document, depending on the situation at the time. And that's very, very difficult. I know all of us would like nothing better than to have the kids all in school five days a week. But we have to trust Dr. Patel and the information that she's privy to that maybe all of us aren't in terms of information from the Health Department and the CDC and ongoing guidelines about what's happening. I will tell you, you know, I can't imagine, you know, when my kids were little as a single parent, if they wouldn't have been able to go to school, and I wouldn't have been able to work, what I would have done. It would have been just so challenging. But I can also tell you that if you've experienced someone having COVID, that it kind of changes your perspective. I had a friend who died from COVID, and the last time I was able to see her was on Mother's Day through a window. And she died memorial, she died on June 4th. My son is a firefighter, my stepson is a firefighter in Connecticut, and I thank God that he had the good sense not to tell us that he tested positive until he was over it, because we probably would have been, you know, out of our minds with worry. He has a wife and a two-year-old daughter who's soon gonna be two. So it's hard to evaluate all those things, and our main goal is always to keep everybody safe. We do want the kids to learn, but I'm just hoping that things look better and it'll change back to five days. So that's my prayer.
I also want to say thank you to Sandy. I've been on the board one year, and she's always got everything ready to go. She's got reservations, she's got appointments, she's got everything ready for us. She's done a fantastic job. I wish her the best. I know Jamie will do an excellent job. She's already doing an excellent job. I am looking forward to graduation. After teaching for 26 years, there are still students coming through the system, and it's always such an exciting thrill to see those kids cross the stage and receive their diploma. And what is so impressive is to sit at graduation for Secman and for Fox and have those students stand up, and the declaration of how much scholarship money they've accrued as a class altogether is unbelievable. And no matter whether it's a pandemic, whether it's virtual learning, whether it's the amount of money we spend per child, the Fox District has always come through. We have always given everything we have. The teachers give everything they have, and our students have one of the best educations known. And so it's just always impressive at how these students accrue all of this money for scholarships. And so I am looking forward to graduation on Sunday also.
Carol?
Just a couple of things. Welcome, Jamie, and goodbye, Sandy, and lots of luck in your new position. I hope you stop by and see us sometime when you have a day off. Thank NEA for the donation. It's always nice to know that you're there to support whatever the district needs. And I also want to say that I 100% understand parents concerned about starting this school year. And the only thing I can say is that there has been so much work and so much thought by Dr. Patel, I don't know when she ever sleeps, to try to get this thing to work for everybody. And I think my priority in my mind right now is keeping our kids safe. And it's unfortunate that the safety of our children has to be put above educating our children. But I'm thinking this year, that's what we're going to have to be concentrating on, and that education is going to take second to safety, and that's very unfortunate. It's no fault of anybody's, but there's just a lot, a lot of things happening. I think Dr. Patel has mentioned, this is, her plan is, it could change tomorrow if more information comes out that warrants a change. So we just have to trust her judgment, and believe me, she has the best interest of our kids at heart. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank NEA for their donation. We truly appreciate your help. And also to thank Sandy and wish you the best. I'm only, was able to work with you for two meetings, and you were very organized, and I greatly appreciate that. I'm looking forward to graduation. I still have students going through the system, so it'll be nice to see them walk the stage and get their diploma. And I also would like to thank the parents and the teachers. I've heard from quite a few people this past week. I understand your concerns, and we are doing our best to keep the students safe, our staff safe, our teachers safe. That's top priority. So we're going to have a presentation of the plan here soon, and hopefully, if you have any questions, you'll have a better understanding. So, and that's it.
Dr. Brock?
I have no report.
I just want to thank all of the teachers who've engaged in professional development over the summer. I've said this probably at the last three board meetings now, but I'll say it every chance I get. We had more than 1,400 registrations for professional development events this summer, and that's with a certified staff of about 850. So it's an extraordinary number of opportunities for professional learning over the summer. And as the plans come out and get more clear, teachers' overwhelming response is, I need to learn more. What more can I learn? And we're trying to find more opportunities for more teachers even yet, with no money and no time left to figure that out. I also want to thank all of the parents who have reached out. I just get a very small sliver of the emails that come to Dr. Patel and to JP, and every single email that has come to me with a question or concern has included, thank you so much for the amount of work that you've put into this already, but we have a few questions. And people have been extraordinarily kind in their requests. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I just want to draw your attention to the construction planning for the bond issues project document that I said at each of your places. Hopefully, this is, I understand the last one you received was too small, so hopefully, this one is large enough. Otherwise, we'll have to go to a printer to have it blown up a little more. So this is the preliminary construction schedule that we have right now. So if you look all the way to the left, as far as July 2020, we're just right at the starting point for the design, yeah, design site and owner reviews to start with those two big projects you see up there at the top, Antonia Elementary and Merrimack Heights Elementary. The next thing I want to draw your attention to is the month of April 2021. It's got a little box drawn around it, and the reason that has a box drawn around it, that is basically where the award for the bids will be made for those Phase One, or those first two projects of Phase One. And between January and April of 2021 will be the time that we're gonna look at selling those bonds, or at least a portion of the bonds, so that we can start those projects. So April 2021 is kind of like a groundbreaking without an official groundbreaking. So that's when things are really gonna start moving, and hopefully, we will be moving dirt, hopefully, by May, you know, the end of school, May of 2021. So I just wanted to make sure you understood those couple of things. If you have any other questions about that document, you can feel free to contact me. And it will, as everything we're doing right now, it is a fluid document, so just to keep you apprised there.
Thank you. Forgot my. Dr. Patel, the reentry plan.
Yes. I do want to take this moment to thank NEA for your donations. It's much appreciated. I always like how you guys always come up at the right time and make sure that you're supporting us, so thank you for that. And then also, thank you to everybody who's got their face masks on, and we've got social distancing going on. I know Sandy and Jamie worked hard today. I said, make sure our tables are separated as much as we can, six feet apart, because if we're talking, we may not have our masks on. So thank you, guys, for the social distancing and all of you guys having the masks on. And I agree, Mr. Shalou, we can beat this, but we're gonna all have to do our part on it. So the reentry plan, I'm not going to go into detail with it. You know, I did send the email out. It's got the link, and there's lots of links in there with lots of information. But I did want to give the board and the community just an overview of it. And before I get into it, I think I do want to state that I realize that the plan, not Nisha, but the team that put together, you know, I know it's a lot of people that worked hard on it, lot of different moving parts, and I truly want to thank everybody that had a part in making this come to reality right now and being able to present it. I know it was not one person, it was a team effort. So thank you to my cabinet. Thank you for everybody who's given input, feedback on it. And then having said that, we knew when we created this plan, we were not going to make everybody happy. There was absolutely no way. But what we had to do was create something where we can provide education and balance it with safety. And you are right in terms of this district is always about the kids, and you know I am 100% about that. In addition to the kids' safety, this plan had to take in account close to 1,800 staff members that work every single day with the kids. Our teachers, who are on the front line in the classroom with the students. And we know we can look at data, and we can make data say any story we want. And I'm gonna show you a few slides, and I will present my viewpoint on it. Somebody else will bring me some other data and say, well, look at this. And you're right. We could have a conversation all night long about what data means. But bottom line, as Superintendent, I had to look at the entire district, 11,000-plus. But bottom line, as superintendent, I had to look at the entire district, 11,000 plus kids, close to 1,800 staff members, and say, what can we do to make sure that we can get through this pandemic? And when I looked at the economy, we did a phased-in approach. When we look at sports, we did a phased-in approach. So when we looked at a school setting, I wanted to start off with a phased-in approach. And I know that put parents, I know that that put parents in a tight spot. I get it. Trust me, I understand. And that's a tough, tough decision to make. I know that the reality is we may have kids that are left home alone. And trust me, that does not sit well with any of us. But what we had to do was try and see how we can get through this storm, is what I'm going to call it. And do it in a way that we can make it hopefully as short of a period as we can where kids are not physically in the building and we can move forward quickly and bring them back in. But there's going to be a lot of kinks from day one that we're going to have to work out. So JP, if you don't mind, if you could just put the first slide. So how did we even come to this place, right, where we sent the email on Monday? I know my first box up there says June 16th, but truly it started March. I just didn't put the dates in there. But if you notice, throughout that timeline, starting June 16th, we met with different groups. We met with the teacher leadership group twice. And if you're, if you're not familiar with that group, that group consists of two teacher leaders from each of our school buildings. And one of those teacher leaders is the district teacher, or sorry, the building teacher of the year. So two teachers from each building, met with them, heard their concerns, get their feedback. Then we have meetings with admin council. Admin council is all our administrators and directors. Then we have meetings and that we hear concerns, feedback from our president's forum. Our president's forum consists of the PTO president from each school building, so I thought that would be a good representation of the parents from that. And then we repeated that whole cycle. And things kept evolving throughout that time. And remember before June 16th, we did the survey, which had, we had close to 5,000 responses on. Now, with the survey, and you, absolutely, I even thought of this, the survey was in end of March, or I'm sorry, end of May into June. Things, the case, things were looking great at that point, as great as it can be in a pandemic, right? Cases were low, we were doing good. So yes, I recognize that the responses back then could have been different than what they would be now. But having all that information is where we got to the point we are right now. And then also some more data I want to share with you, because we talked about the learning piece, right? So on the next slide, this, I attended a superintendent's webinar where we, you know, we sat there and we had researchers come in and talk about data with us. And it talked about the academic and socio-emotional impact of kids not being in school. So this is the reality that I do know. I know that two months of school shutdown equals to about a one-year learning loss. And this is worldwide data. This is not just COVID pandemic. It equals to about a 34% drop in fourth grade reading, 81% drop in sixth grade math, and a 20% expansion in the achievement gap, something that we work really hard to close with our free and reduced lunch population, our special education kiddos. So all that is a reality for us. They even said when Hurricane Katrina hit, those kids were out for about four months and it took about two years to get them back. And I know the reality of not having our kids in school. I cannot tell you that enough. I understand that. And then going to the next slide, that's just the academic piece, the socio-emotional impact. 33% of the kids are worried about catching COVID. You see more disengagement in kids that have more adverse childhood experience. And we know we have a lot of kids that come into our classrooms that have suffered a lot. We see that 60% increase in teachers reporting mental health concerns. And you know that if teachers are stressed, the kids are going to be disruptive in those classrooms, and that's a fact. So knowing all of that, I looked at, okay, we know if our kids are not in the building, they're going to struggle academically and we're not going to be meeting their socio-emotional needs. I know that. So what can we do? Is there a way we could get the best of both worlds as much as we can? So then you look at Jefferson County, and every week I have a superintendent's meeting with the St. Louis County superintendent's. And I think it's important for us to know why. It's because of the size of our district. We are the closest border to St. Louis County. A lot of our staff members also live in St. Louis County, from bus drivers, you know, to custodians, secretaries, teachers. So we are included in St. Louis County data in terms of information and communication. So that's a weekly meeting, and we have health officials come to those meetings sometimes too. Then every week, we also have a Jefferson County superintendent's meeting. And every week, we have the Jefferson County's health director in that meeting who gives us updates on information. And then every week, I get an email in my inbox that shows case counts for Jefferson County. Just, was it this morning? Yeah, this morning she sent it to me because I said, we have a board meeting tonight. Do you have any updated data? Here's the first slide. JP, if you can click that for me. This is the number of, and I'm sorry you can't see that, this is the number of confirmed and probable COVID-19 cases by week throughout this pandemic for Jefferson County. So if you look, week 18 is the one that we just finished on Saturday. So if you look, we, for the past two weeks, look at our case count, 169 and 172 compared to all the previous weeks before that. So I got this in my inbox, and then if you go to the next one, this is the number of, and I know we always talk about this, right? Well, what about school-age kids? That's the data for the school-age kids. If you look on the left, the bar graph, week 18 is the week we just had, and then the week prior, and then the weeks prior. And you're right, this is being transparent, right? The age group, zero to nine, it just makes up, and people say, just makes up 1.78%, 10 to 19, 5.2, and 20 over is 87%. But remember, we have children and adults in the school district, so it does impact every single person. Then, this is broken down by zip code. Because I wanted, I was curious. I'm like, yes, we always say, well, what are all the other school districts in the county doing? But we have to remember, we are the largest district in Jefferson County. We are the largest, and that's a fact. So we do have more kids. We do touch more lives. So that's broken down by zip code. So that, the yellow highlighted is Fox School District. So knowing that information, and this was just the past two weeks, I constantly talked to our health director and I said, tell me if I'm going in the wrong direction. Because guys, if you, in those meetings, the president's forums, PTO people, the teacher leaders, they will tell you, three weeks ago, I was five days fully in. I was. Ask my cabinet. I was like, we're doing this? Those kids are coming back five days a week? We're going to put precautions in place. We've got this. And then I am sorry, but as superintendent, the more I kept looking at this, the more I kept hearing about it and seeing this information coming in my inbox, listening to it week by week, I could not put my head down on the pillow and go with five days in. I could not. And I know people disagree with me. I've heard from it. You've been very kind about it. But ultimately, the weight of that decision does lie on my shoulders, and I couldn't do it. So my proposal was a phased-in approach where half the number of kids come in and we can try to get those precautions in place as well. And I kept imagining, and I told JP to go take pictures for me today, actually last night, I think at midnight, I sent him an email. I kept imagining a school, a classroom, if we had done, if we do five days a week, fully in person, and I want to, I want to get there quickly. This is a classroom with 28 desks. There would be kids in every one of those desks. 18 inches between rows. CDC says at least six feet, at least three to six. Put on face mask as well on top of that. This is what a typical one would look like, 28 desks in a secondary classroom. Next one, if I do the hybrid model, half the number of kids, that's what it would look like. So as a teacher, standing there, that's what you would look like, you would, you could look in the classroom as opposed to the other one. At the elementary, this is what it would look like if we were coming in, kids filled in. Again, 12 inches between the rows. And if we did the hybrid with half the population coming in, you can space it out more. But I know it doesn't solve the problem of childcare. But it helps us hopefully prevent something that could, could be deadly, and we know that. And I know that people would say, well, look at the data. I get it. I do, I do. And then if you look at, I don't know if we ended up, yeah, so go, go to the next one, JP. So that's why, when you look at this overall plan that we've put together, I was, two weeks ago, Level A. Anyone who knows me knows I was there. And in two weeks, I thought about it. I looked at all the different angles. We talked about, can we logistically, on the first day of school, bring everybody in? Make sure they're having face masks on, make sure they're social distancing, guys, make sure they're washing their hands, make sure they're sanitizing, make sure they're cleaning, make sure you're doing your health screener. Can we realistically accomplish that? Or would it be safer and wiser to do it with half the number of kids? Right now, we're in Level B. Jefferson County Health Department, if you go to their website, I think they're in the, Dr. Gilman was it yellow, the yellow middle part. My hope is that in five weeks from now, we can go to in-person learning and fully in-person. But I don't know if we can. And even if we can, I truly do believe in a phased-in approach. NEA is sitting there. I had a meeting with NEA. Paul and Angie, you did a survey with your staff just last week. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the staff is concerned as well about this. You know, I think that the hybrid piece helps everyone, except for, I do agree, the childcare piece is huge. Obviously, the virtual learning would be if something happened, and I do get questions on that, that is, in case we have a, you know, kids test positive. But again, if we can do social, you know, contract tracing, not social distancing, contact tracing, we would be able to determine, is it just that classroom that needs to be quarantined? Is it that hallway, or is it that whole building? And so sometimes we may have to go virtual learning on that. And then of course, parents have the complete choice of the Fox C6 Virtual Academy, which would be a semester. And if that's a parent's decision, we have about, look, I think, 190 secondary, 180 elementary as of right now who've signed up for that. So we do have quite a few kids signing up for that as well. And that, and you know, someone asked me, well, why would a parent do that? And I think for some parents, they just want to make that decision for the whole semester. They don't want to wonder, okay, this month are we going to do this? This month, is this going to happen? They just, they've decided Virtual Academy is perfect for them, and that's great. So that's a choice that they're making. Another question I get is, well, if we're in the hybrid learning, are you just going to switch tomorrow and nobody would even know? No, it's going to take a little bit of time, and I hope that we can at least try and see how this works. And then depending on the cases and what's happening, we can then switch over to five days in person and then stay there as long as we can. We don't want to make this a in-out, in-out. We're trying to avoid that. So another, some more questions that have come up, and I know that I'm going to have Dr. Cardona and Dr. Gilman come up here, and I'm not going to take too much time, but what does virtual learning really look like? If you guys don't mind, do you mind coming up or just speaking to that, please? I think that's the next slide, JP.
So Randy and I are going to tag team a little bit on this, but when we started looking at what can the fall look like, when you have good plans in place, what you do is you always go back and look at what has happened before. And we had some good data from when we had to shut down in the spring, and we know what we did in the spring did not work. It was not good for kids, right? We were doing the hold harmless. We weren't ready for that shutdown. Virtual learning wasn't what it should be. So we went back, we looked at that, and we had received the data that Dr. Patel was talking about, did the surveys. And one of the things that came out from parents was the weekly engagement. I didn't know what my child was doing. There were so many things coming at us from many different angles. And so when we sat down, we had one committee, we had elementary and secondary teachers together, and Randy and I met with them via Zoom. And we quickly learned after talking with them that we needed to split up into our groups, right? Because secondary has different, different things that we need to look at than elementary. So we split them into two different groups, and one of the things that was prevalent was we needed to have a piece for engagement. So one of the things that we're going to be doing this time around is we are, we have something in place in Tyler where teachers can report engagement on students weekly. I think that's key for parents, especially parents that may be working and they can't be there all day to see. And when my child is on those virtual days, where are they at? And we, that is right in Tyler, parents can see that. So that is one key thing that we are going to be doing. And really, the grading practices is about good practice. And what we wanted is, we wanted something that was fluid, whether we were all in, whether we had to be hybrid, or whether we had to go to all virtual. We are not using the hold harmless this time. We wanted good grading practices no matter where that child was sitting. And so that's really what we worked on. And then before I turn this over to Randy, really the big piece is focusing on the essentials, giving feedback, and making sure that we're supporting those students and their learning. And that's really what the bulk of our conversations were around and the decisions that we made for the grading practices for virtual.
Yes, and Dr. Cardona mentioned that it was kind of interesting because the group wanted to split into secondary and elementary. But then we kind of ended up at the very end, kind of like coming back together and realizing, this really is about best grading practices. I got a quote here from Ken O'Connor that says, "The order of operations, order of operations in teaching should be first, student relationships and wellness." And we, and we talked about how that is so important in person, as Dr. Cardona said, but also virtually. And so we have added that. That's a big component to this, and we'll kind of give teachers some strategies for making sure that happens. Second is learning, and then third is assessment. And Dr. Cardona mentioned like the feedback piece. We go into a little more depth with our staff, just as far as like what makes good feedback. It should be timely and descriptive, goal-oriented, user-friendly, actionable and consistent. And so that feedback piece is going to be a really important, important thing if we have to go into that environment where it's a virtual setting.
And I think the, one of the key things is on this is that we know that there's concerns about, wow, two, two days out of the week, kids will be in the building, and three, they'll be out, virtual learning. But what we're trying to say is that we've learned from what we did in March, our teachers stepped up in March with a day's notice. They did the best they could under the circumstances. They truly did. And I know that as Mr. Fitzpatrick said, we had over 1,400 teachers take professional development over the summer. They learned how to teach better, virtual setting, and now we will be better from it. Will we be perfect? I don't know, but we're going to try to be perfect, you know? Technology is a whole other piece, right? Families who don't have technology, hotspots, Chromebooks, we're also working on that. Luke, if you don't mind.
Before, before you go to technology, can I just ask a question? Today I had several seniors pass through my office, several seniors, and here's what they said. Yeah, I'm going to school two days and I'm going to work three days. How is virtual for the secondary students going to look? I mean, are they going to be logging in at a certain time with a certain teacher? Or are they going to be able to pick that up as something recorded in the evening and they can go work?
So, good question. So we actually did a lot of training around this with our teachers the last couple of days. And the group of teachers that we met with were the teacher leader groups, so there were 10 to 15 from each secondary building. But you know, the thought is that when you have your students in front of you in a classroom, that's when you're giving that support for the learning that's already been pushed out. Now, students learn differently, and I know when we were, in the spring when we had shut down, some teachers were saying, I would push things out, but the students weren't even accessing it till 1:00 in the morning, or they wanted, they wanted to sleep till 10:30 or 11:00. So the thought is that teachers are preparing that virtual day on Wednesday. They're preparing their lessons for about a week and pushing that out to their students. So the students can at their own time look at that. But when they have them in person, in front of them, that is when the teacher is saying, okay, these are the lessons I pushed out. These are the things that we went over. Now that I have you sitting here in front of me, let's sit down and let's talk about what were the struggles? What can we work on together? And this is going to be- And this is going to be key for math. Because one of the things we heard of a lot was, my child can't do math virtually, right? And we all know that when it comes to math, if you're anything like me, somebody has to show me step by step where I went wrong. And so that's why that face-to-face time is going to really be used as that RTI time. There will also be set times and schedule that will be shared with the parents. Actually, I think it was actually part of the plan that went out of office hours on that Wednesday. So students can log into that office hour and meet with their teacher and say, this is my struggle. I had a question about this, but they don't have to because they will be seeing their teacher face-to-face those two days that week.
Okay, so those, so Wednesday is the office hour time when the parents can ask questions, the kids can ask questions. But then on the other two days, the teachers are actually meeting with the kids at a certain time?
Well, the other two days, the teacher is actually teaching in their classroom with the other half of the students that are there face-to-face. Right? So on Monday, Tuesday, I have half of the population.
So when do they, when do they virtually, on Wednesday, they virtually meet? So that's, it's just a time when they can ask questions?
Correct.
Okay. And so what about at the elementary level? Is it the same thing?
It'll be, it'll be similar, but obviously, you know, that's going to look different in kindergarten than it will in like fifth grade. Similar setup, for sure.
And Tammy, I had a question about, for the high schools, the block scheduling. I couldn't wrap my head around. They're already going alternating days for different classes. How's that going to work with the two-day in with the hybrid?
So you have to think of it as, so we're taking our population and splitting it in half by alphabet. So let's say the first part of the alphabet is going to be Group A. Second half of the alphabet will be Group B. So Group A will come to school on Monday, Tuesday. If you're a high school student, you do the block schedule. So on Monday, you will go to 1357, which will be 95-minute classes. On Tuesday would be your second day in face-to-face learning, you will go to 2468. Then if you're the second half of the alphabet, you come in on Thursday, Friday, and you do the same thing. Thursday, I'm at 1357. On Friday, I'm at 2468. So that's how the block will work. And really, it's about trying to stay consistent because as Dr. Patel mentioned, our hope is that we're going to be able to quickly move to a five-day week. And kids are already in the habit of, this is what my first day looks like, the 1357. This is what my next day looks like. So that we're not trying to transition schedules at the same time.
Tammy, is there some kind of an online platform that we're going to be using, like Blackboard or Canvas or anything like that?
So we are trying to move all the teachers to use Clever for the most part. And I don't know if Declan can address this or not, but you know, that, and I'm going to be honest, at the secondary level, we're still trying to move the teachers to that. A lot of teachers use Google Classroom at the secondary level. I actually worked with one of our, sorry, one of our teachers, and she actually created an app that I can go to on my phone. If my child's at Secman Middle School, I can click their grade level. I can click their teacher, and I can see their homework, their assignments for that whole week. And I can carry it on my phone. Took her about three and a half hours to set it up. But you know, our goal, because one of the things we heard back from parents was, I'm getting so many different emails from so many different teachers, it's overwhelming. I can't keep up. And so we're trying to find a platform, if not consistent across all secondary, that we're at least using something consistent within a building so that it helps those parents. Because that's a struggle when you're working and doing everything else and trying to keep up with everything that's coming in.
I can address that a little too. The Clever platform is a landing page for every login that a student might have. So there's only one place for parents to go to log in their students. And once they log into Clever, all of their usernames and passwords are saved in one place. So even if students are using a variety of different software platforms for completing work, they log in at one place, and that gives them access to all of those places. And in that spot, they can also log into Google Classroom. So you're familiar with Canvas or with Blackboard. Those are complete learning management systems that take any content and put it all in one format. The closest thing we have to that is Google Classroom because it's free. Those learning platforms cost an enormous amount of money to implement. But Google Classroom is the most widely-used resource that we have. And it organizes and communicates all of the assignments. And teachers can even grade assessments in there. And it's the closest thing that we have to something like Canvas or Blackboard.
Declan? When will they have their Clever badges ready? Will those be ready first week of school? I know that most of the students, I know I used it with my grandchildren when I was homeschooling. So they have, will that badge go to the next grade level? Is that how that works?
The Clever badges are generated with, the students already have their Clever credentials, and Luke has, and Luke can probably address this. But it's just a step for a building secretary in a building to press a button, and it prints a Clever badge for every student. So it'll be new for each student this year.
It will be new, okay. So I was just wanting to make sure that they had those as soon as possible, just in case something would happen.
And then one more piece we wanted to make sure we talk about is the technology. Luke, if you want to come up and go through this for us.
All right, well, one thing I've learned during a pandemic that technology becomes increasingly popular during this period of time to try and meet needs for. So we are, we are going to look at some of the, some of the data for the district itself. You know, with technology, there is a, there's a certain reality that it is costly. And we find ourselves in a situation where there's a significant amount of investment that is needed to really thoroughly do a full pandemic like this. So we have come up with, you know, some plans in order to kind of use what we have and to also kind of look at, you know, the future of technology for Fox. So here in the district right now, we have roughly, you know, 10,500 Chromebooks. That number is still growing, and it grows with every year. That number is slightly misleading because as a district, we, we plan every year in a budget to rotate out certain devices to keep them fresh. And then in that plan, we plan to meet a two-to-one. So that means two devices for every one student. So that is what the budget is built for. It is not built for one-to-one. We are not there. We have an interesting problem in that, you know, along with that need for Chromebooks, we have a need for access. If you were to go north of here, you would find, and in fact, you know, here very recently, I met with Charter along with many other directors in the St. Louis area. And we fit a very interesting spot in that we sit rural enough that where Charter does not service all of our students. That's a significant disadvantage for us because we can't utilize what they are offering children who are in need of high-speed access right now. So we are finding the hotspots, which I'll address up here as well. But to go back to our Chromebook number, that number we anticipate would probably be, probably be 80% of that total number that if we needed to deploy, and which we will, and our plan is to deploy as needed to our students, we will. So we will need also, you know, we will need our families that do have devices to obviously utilize those devices during this time if we were to completely go virtual and deploy everything that we have. This is not a long-term plan. We look at, we look at this, we look at this number, and we, we know that we could deploy everything today, and it will completely, we anticipate it would be fine for this upcoming year. But we do understand that as this has taught us anything, we, we need a long-term. We do have a long-term plan, but there's, like I said, there's a significant capital investment to make, which I would be more than happy to talk about the numbers if we wanted to go there. So we will. We do have a plan that we will actually do an e-form in Tyler currently. What will happen is families will be able to go through that e-form and request a device. That device will then be signed off by the principal, and then it will be deployed from our buildings. We may have to do some shuffling, depending on the building and the availability of Chromebooks at that building. And the need that we could see in those buildings, we may have to shift some devices, which we have never done, but we completely deem that a plausible option. So we will go ahead and we will kind of shift those as the need arises and as we begin to see the numbers. Where we completely see the most gap right now is internet service. We, over the summer, knowing that this was a reality, and we estimate that we, at low end, probably would need 350 hotspots, low end, to service the kids that actually need, need internet at home. And that could be for a myriad of reasons. That could be because of socioeconomic. That could also be because they simply live far enough out that cell service is not good enough to reach them. So we have some, or that actually broadband is not, not out there. So we know that that's a, a need at this point in time. We will be working with families as we move forward to try and identify if Charter could service them as well. It is a time, it is a time-consuming process in some capacity to get a service person out there to do that. So we do know that we will probably have to act sooner than later. We do also anticipate that if, and I'm not going to talk extreme numbers, but we do know that just to meet probably the bare minimum need would be about $90,000 this year to service just hotspots. So if we were to talk one-to-one, we do know that it would be about $2.6 million to buy every, everybody a device moving in for us. So it is a, it's a significant, it's a significant investment. We obviously have a plan that would not entail that, to do that moving forward in years to come.
Luke?
Yes.
Would it be too expensive to use phone hotspots?
Well, that's, I mean, that's what we, that's where essentially, so that number that we did over the summer is 50 to 60. We would need about 350 hotspots to serve students, which would be about, it would be about $90,000 this year of an investment to service this. We do, I do, when I say minimum, we base that number off of surveys, off of information that we've gathered from obviously the Tyler surveys that we've done. And so we, we could be looking at a minimum level, and it could be greater than we even know at this point in time.
So Luke, for families, as they're registering their children for whichever plan they are choosing, if they have a need in the area of technology, they should do that process at the same time? Do you have any idea what the kind of turnaround would be? Better do it sooner than later.
Yeah, since it's going to be deployed from the building, you know, it's a, it's a pretty readily available process. You know, we'll have to keep in mind that we'll still have students in the building. So there's going to have to be some allocations made to make sure that we are still servicing all the students in the building while still servicing the students that need it that are completely virtual. So there's, I'd be lying if I said that we don't have some obstacles to overcome in this area because we are so dependent on technology in every form and facet. We have made some strides over the last year with being able to, this year, we'll be able to make available some, some level of management. Even if we were going to be virtual, we do have a program now that we will be sharing with the teachers that they will be able to manage Chromebooks even from home to see what the kid is doing. As long as they are logged on to their account, we can send them links out as a class and so on. So there's some, there's some great things that we have, that we have going for us, but we do also have some obstacles.
Thank you. Thanks, Luke. So that's, that's really all I wanted to make sure that we kind of touched base on with the re-entry plan. I know there's a lot of questions. I know we have an email address, and I know parents are reaching out to us. But I want to thank everybody who continues to work on this. And then also to reiterate that this is a fluid plan. I cannot sit here and tell you on August 26th, this is exactly what's going to happen because as we know, since March 17th, things change constantly. That's why we need to have something that's flexible and we can shift accordingly. But I also understand and I hear all the parent concerns. I know Judy and I spoke yesterday, I think it was yesterday on the phone for a while. And I know that even maybe amongst the board even, I don't know, this is a difficult decision for everybody. And I just ask for your patience. I ask for your understanding. We're going to do everything we can to keep your kids safe and learning at high levels as much as we can, as long as we can. And I don't know, Judy, if you wanted to share some of your thoughts about our conversation from yesterday even, you know?
I will do that, but I do have some questions that were sent to me that some people really, really wanted answered, and we've already talked about this. And so you, you've had a chance to think about, about these and answer some of them. One was, are teachers going to be teaching online via Zoom? Or will it be like in March when they were just checking in, giving them Dreambox assignments or Mayan nonfiction reading? So on their virtual day, the teachers that are in the classroom, on their virtual day, the teachers will be just checking in, answering questions for parents and students. So for the people who are all, all virtual, how will that work for them? Will the teachers actually be having a lesson and teaching on the Zoom?
For the students in the Fox C6 Academy?
Academy.
Yes, they would. So those would be separate students, separate program, but aligned to the curriculum that's occurring in the classroom, which I believe is a question about pacing.
Yes. So it's, the other question was, are all virtual teachers following a planned program or a pacing guide for each grade level? For consistency, for when possibly everybody returns in January, will each first-grade teacher throughout the district be teaching the same standards, first quarter, second quarter? So when they come back to school third quarter, is that going to be happening?
Yes, then that's very, very important that it happens because I've already had quite a few parents email me and ask, can we have Fox C6 Virtual Academy second semester? And I said, right now, we can't commit to it. Let's go one semester at a time.
Okay, so then that was another, I didn't write this one down, but somebody said, what if they, I know that they can't switch back and forth, that if they switch virtual, what if they start in-person? Can they switch to virtual?
Yes. Right now, we are thinking that we can accommodate that. But again, we're going to have to see because staffing might not be there.
Another question some teachers had were, who do virtual teachers report to?
And that would be, in my mind, if you're a virtual teacher, you're teaching kids that could be from across the district. So if I'm a second-grade teacher, my immediate supervisor would still be my building principal, and that's who I would report to.
Okay. Dr. Brock has on a lovely face shield.
Yes.
And so one of the questions was, are the teachers or students permitted to wear face shields?
Right now, we're saying CDC, if you look at CDC guidelines, they say that face masks are ideal for minimizing transmission. Face shields have not shown the evidence to do that, so we're leaning towards face masks, unless you have a medical condition and you, you know, we can work through that.
Okay, I guess the instance was given that some of the kids in some of the special ed rooms don't cover their coughs, don't cover their sneezes, and they wanted to wear both.
Okay.
So I think it was, they thought, they weren't sure if face masks were completely, no.
If face masks were.
I mean, if the shields, could they wear shields and masks?
Yes, yes.
And then I just have one more on here. And the question was, if all of a sudden, everything went to virtual, where would the teachers be teaching from? Would they be teaching from home, or would they be teaching from school, even though it would be virtual?
That's a question that keeps coming up, and I truly don't have an answer for right now because it's going to depend on why we went 100% virtual. Was it because that building had an outbreak of COVID and we needed to disinfect for two days? Then yes, we wouldn't be bringing the teachers back in. But if you recall, in March, we closed the buildings. We didn't allow teachers to even enter the buildings. And in this scenario, we may keep the buildings open. So I would assume the teachers would want to go in the buildings. Their supplies are there, their resources are there. That's going to depend on the situation.
My next question is, school starts on a Wednesday. So that's a virtual day. So how will Wednesday, those Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, how will that look when school starts?
So we wouldn't, since we are a school district, we can change that, right? Wednesday technically in a hybrid schedule would be virtual, but we want our teachers to see the kids. So what we would do is that first group, as Dr. Cardona was saying, you were splitting up your population, Group A, Group B. Group A would go Wednesday. Thursday would be your virtual day. Friday, you see Group B. So basically, you're taking that long, the big week and just condensing it. So the teachers have met all the kids. have met all the kids.
Okay. And then this was the conversation that we had because I I've had so many people contact me, and I know in looking at the ZIP codes, that has kind of helped me to understand a little bit more. But I mean, there are so many people, and I truly feel like we ought to be going five days. I feel like if we send the kids to school for two days and they go to daycare three days, instead of being with their classroom all five days, now they're with their classroom two days, they're going into a childcare facility, they're intermingling their germs with those other children and then bringing them back. So the kids that are at daycare Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, show up at school on Thursday, having been with a different group of kids, then I feel like it would have been safer to have had them with their classroom in a controlled environment all five days. I just feel it could be controlled a little bit more. Working parents are freaking out over the cost. And the other conversation we had was, if all of these kids have to go to some kind of childcare, and I know some people have grandparents, some people have a neighbor, some people have, you know, you have different babysitting abilities, but if all of these kids have to go to childcare, none of the childcare facilities in our community are are big enough or set up to house big kids and a lot of kids. There are about two, Canaan Baptist Church, but that's in St. Louis County. First Baptist Church is set up to do that. The second problem is not having enough staff. When you go to a daycare center, they don't have the luxury of one teacher for 25 students. They have to have a smaller ratio. And just being able to get staffing would be very, very difficult. The other thing was, and you've talked about this, children are going to be left alone. They're they're just going to be left alone, eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, because parents are going to go to work. Children through high school, they're going to be at home on the Internet unsupervised. And I just think it's really, really dangerous. Teachers, one of the things teachers have said is, they're not so much concerned about their health as they are the liability of a child in their classroom contracting COVID and them being sued. And your conversation with me was that if a parent chooses to send their kids to school, they're taking that risk. And that when you decide to send your child to school, you are taking the risk, and that teachers shouldn't be worried about being sued over COVID because the parents knew that was a risk when they sent their kids. And so I thought that was important for the teachers to know. My other question is, if we can have football, why can't we have class? I mean, if we've got kids out there tackling each other in each other's space, why can't we go to school? And so in saying all of that, I really do feel like we need to go five days. I feel like we can control where the kids are a little better in daycare there, if they're just with their own own classmates. I think it's safer. But I do understand with the ZIP codes, but I am hoping that things change rapidly and that we go to five days. So I just needed to say that.
What is the protocol if a student is diagnosed with COVID in a classroom? Does that, are?
You mean, like showing symptoms?
Well, they're showing symptoms and they're diagnosed. In other words, we go to school, because this, I was looking at the Imperial numbers, and, you know, that resulted in like three restaurants being closed and everything else. I mean, when that happens, it it interferes tremendously. So if we have a student that is diagnosed that's in a first-grade classroom, and he's diagnosed, what happens at that point?
So we have, I don't know, you have the reentry plan in front of you, and there's a lot of steps that we would take that I outlined in here. But basically, we would find the individual, if they're showing symptoms at that time, quickly isolate them in the nurse's office, and then make sure that we can begin contact tracing. That's why assigned seats is going to be the norm.
Okay, but what happens to the class? Do they continue coming to school, or do we?
No, that's why we need to make sure that we have contact tracing. So find out that student that tests positive, who was within six feet of that student for more than 15 minutes?
Okay.
That's the rule of thumb, and they automatically get quarantined.
Okay, and that's for two weeks, or?
14 days.
14 days.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Are we ready to move on?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 3.5, Resolution on Suspending Policies to Align with COVID-19 Emergency Legislation and Waivers. And basically, in some documents through Missouri School Board Association, there were some considerations for COVID-19. And one of them was that school boards should consider voting on a resolution that would make it clear that if the governor of Missouri, which he has, has issued an executive order and there's subsequent orders related to the pandemic, and also the State Department of Education has, they've taken actions to suspend or modify requirements of their statutes and regulations, then the local districts, the school boards, should consider passing a resolution clarifying that due to these circumstances coming from the State Department, that we may not be able to implement all of our policies and procedures as written so that the waivers would apply to us as well. And it's really to protect the district. So I know that that I sent that information out to you, and everybody had a chance to read it. And so at this time, I'd like us to consider a motion for, to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 4.1, Financial Report. Mr. Stewart.
So you have, as you're accustomed to seeing, this bar graph of our fund balances. And I am happy to report, even though operating-wise, and that's what these, this is, the two operating funds, Fund One and Fund Two. So we've completed the fiscal year into June 30th. And our, I know with COVID going on, we were, you know, and taking hits from state funding and the like, I was predicting that our fund balances were going to be significantly less than what they ended up at 13.4 million roughly. And pardon me, the 13, or the, we ended up at, sorry, 15.4 million. I have my glasses on. But 15.4 million, so that is a decline in fund balance from a year ago of about 240, $55,000. And while that is a deficit operating-wise, it is not what we were expecting. And so the that that fund balance, so whenever we do the, whenever we do our final reporting to DESI for the year-end, we always talk about the fund balance percentage, and that is the Fund One and Fund Two amount of money left in the bank compared to the expenditures of the prior year. And so the 15.4 million winds up being 13.58%. A year ago, the 15.6 million was 13.35%. So even though the fund balance went down in real dollars, it actually increased in percent. Now, what can cause that? Of course, we had the pandemic, and so for the months of April, May, and June, our spending was way down. So although, you know, salaries and benefits make up 80-plus percent of our budget, we were not spending as much on utilities. We were not spending on transportation, you know, fuel and the like. We were not spending on supplies and other things like that. And actually, we were able to, some of our contracts we had for purchase services, you know, because everything was shut down, there were, you know, credits given for for a portion of those. So with all that being said, our revenues, of course, they came in lower than the original budget for the year by, well, and I'll just talk about the operating funds so that we don't get, we don't mix in the capital projects and the debt service. But we came in better than the original budget, I'm sorry, came in under the original budget by about a half a million dollars. But our expenditures came in under by a few million when you look at all said and done. So although as a terrible thing of what's going on, we came through it fiscally in better shape than we expected. One other portion, and I know we've been, there've been lots of questions over the last couple of months about the CARES Act money. We did wind up receiving the 75% of of those funds at the end of June. So we received about $787,000 of revenue for CARES Act in fiscal year 2020. So that also helped that. So so while it's not an ideal situation to be in, we are going to be starting off fiscal year 2021 in better shape than we anticipated over the last few months. So that's, that's good news. We still got a lot of work to do, and I will talk about that in the in the next section.
Did the CARES Act money, were there stipulations on what that had to be spent on?
There were, but they were really broad. And so we, what we did, because of course, we had to submit documentation, and in order to receive the funds, we had to tell them that we had already spent the funds. So one of the things we could spend it on was teacher salaries and benefits. So we allocated that $787,000, I think it was to, I think it was to the two high schools, to salaries that were not already being paid for through federal funds. And so it was a portion of three payrolls that absorbed that $787,000. We uploaded all that documentation, signed off on everything through DESI, and received the funds. I think it was like June 26th or something, so right at the end of of the of the year. We will, well, we haven't got the, we haven't got the final information on when the other 25% can be applied for, but we will do a similar submittal and, you know, apply it towards, use to apply towards some payroll, just because that makes the the red tape that you gotta go through easier because you're allocating it to a limited number of things instead of trying to allocate it to all sorts of books, supplies, things that, you know, we need to to do. But it still helps the bottom line regardless. So we will be getting another 260 or so thousand dollars, hopefully, this current year, 2021.
Anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Stewart on this part?
Okay, the next one's yours, too. It's the budget for 2021.
I do have one question.
Oh.
John?
Sir.
So how does this position us relative to getting to December without having to do tax anticipation bonds?
So I have begun with the, I've got most of the information in from my analysis on on fund balances running through the end of the year. It puts us in a better position. We are still lower than we were a year ago. If expenditures track as they have historically, we might be able to scrape by without borrowing any any money. However, even if we are able to do that, just because with with the pandemic and all of a sudden, okay, we need to buy a a large supply of, you know, masks, hand sanitizer, those kinds of things that are going to need to be purchased anyway, I'm going to go ahead and apply for the tax anticipation note anyway. But I don't think we'll be borrowing, if any, near as much as we had originally anticipated. So I think it's better to have that available to our, at our disposal should we need it, but would only tap into that if it was required.
In other words, we don't have to spend that.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it would be more like a a home equity loan, if you think about it that way, that it's available for you if you need to, and you, you know, if you need to borrow and and, you know, do an addition or a remodel, you can, and then you pay it back. If you don't need it, you don't borrow.
Now is the 2021 budget. Mr. Stewart?
So as you recall, passing the budget last month, of course, it's a deficit budget. And I know there are lots of ideas to to balance that, to work towards balancing that budget. The spreadsheet that you have, the PDF document, which is a portion of a spreadsheet that you have, you just have the the overall summary page. I first want to say that, I want to make you understand that this is a work in progress. This is not a finalized document, okay? And maybe I should have put draft across it. That probably would have been a great idea. So I don't want any anybody to get fixated on what the operating fund balances are past 2019, 2020. Because if you look at 2016, 17 through 2019, 2020, those are actual fund balances, those are real numbers. That's actually what happened. Looking forward, the 2021, that is the budget that was passed as, you know, in June for this fiscal year, 2021. The next three columns are simply projections that are based on various assumptions that are built into the spreadsheet. I can make adjustments in whether we look at ADA, I can make adjustments at the amount of funding that we're going to be receiving from the state based on any proration factor, which would be based on any reduction from the governor to DESI. I can make adjustments on, you see, the assessed valuation up there, those are projections, so I can adjust that, and what our collection rates are on that. So there's a huge amount of data behind this that can be tweaked, and we can look at scenarios to see, you know, what if this happened, you know, what if this changed? How would that affect us going forward? It's got assumptions in there based on our current salary schedule, based on the cost of benefits going up, based on the cost of supplies going up, inflation factors in there for for utilities, yeah, supplies, purchase services, all those things. So those are base assumptions. I I do have more work to do on this to make sure that it is fleshed out properly. We can change around the levy in there as far as how much we want to allocate to the capital projects versus how much is is to operating. The debt service, I don't have, you'll notice the large increase in the debt service fund balance, and and that's because we're, the levy, I believe, is is does not include, well, yeah, the, going forward, it does not include our our future debt that we'll be taking on whenever we sell these bonds that that are out there. So so this projection is one tool that I'm going to be using to see how we progress through this year and how that will work into a a future finance plan for the district, long-range plan, which, and I'll take a moment to to plug this, and hopefully, anybody watching at home that is interested in serving on the District Finance Committee, I know we've got some applications in, we've been really busy. I do plan on getting that up and running this fall, but this would be a document that I would be sharing with that group to have discussions around and what-if scenarios and those kinds of things. So this will be something that I'm working on on a on a regular basis. To manage working towards balancing the budget and, you know, keeping an eye on it, the, so the the long-range plan is going to be a big help there. We have the document, of course, that was shared with the board last month with the the possible cost-saving measures that the district could implement. Of course, we have implemented a number of those, and we have a Google document in the in Cabinet that we're tracking those actual savings with. And I believe that information's being shared in a weekly update with the board. So that will be accurate, and and that will be one way that we're looking at that. One huge thing that we've implemented since I got to Fox is our software has the ability to not allow even a purchase order to be entered on on a specific expenditure line if there's no budget money available for it. So even if there is a little bit, you know, if the budget still shows that there's $100 and somebody wants to buy something for $100 and a penny, and they try to enter that PO, it will not let you enter the PO. So if you can't enter the PO, you can't make the purchase. That's the way the the flow is in in the business office. So so we turned that on. So that will help moving forward that if somebody's trying to enter a PO and they So that will help moving forward, that if somebody's trying to enter a PO and they can't, because they don't have the budget money, they've got to figure out where they have budget money that they can either transfer ahead of time, or, or they go without the purchase. So what the budget is, is what the budget is, and, and a PO cannot be entered to go over and above that. So that, that's a huge ability to, to address those issues. My new Director of Finance and Business Services will, along with myself, will be doing monthly financial analysis of our, of our finances as we go through. She's very good at, at what she does, and I'm already very impressed with, with her as she just started on the 2nd of July, but she's doing a fantastic job for me. We will be bringing, oh, one other thing in our, in our process, even the POs that do get entered, every single PO is reviewed by the Director of Finance and Business Operations. So she, she literally sees every PO, makes sure that the correct documentation is attached, supporting that purchase order, and if it's not the correct account number, she will either send it back to have a correct account number on it, or make a contact with the person that entered the PO to get that account number correct, and let, let them know what's going on there. And so she sees every single purchase order. We will be doing regular budget adjustments that we will be bringing to the board for their approval. Those adjustments, I'm, I'm hoping we'll do them quarterly. The first adjustment for 2020, 21 will probably be sooner than the quarter, simply because of some changes in federal funding from what the projections were that we used to build the budget. So we've got to change those, those, those numbers, both revenue and expenditure numbers in the budget that are federally funded, so there will be some changes coming for that. I do follow the, you know, every month DESI puts out a, a finance memo that talks about all the different finance topics, so I stay on top of those. And we review, you know, every month, at the beginning of the month, the governor's budget office. Also, they put out their monthly state revenue update to keep us apprised of, of where we're at with the state. That's gonna be very important this year, as the economy of the state of Missouri starts to open back up. Where are we in comparison to the restricted budget that the, that the governor has, has out there at this point? And then one other piece is there's still some opportunities for grant money related to the, the CARES Act that will be coming out in the beginning of August through the county. I don't know what the amount available is at this point. Do you know that the window opens up, I believe it is August the 4th, that the window to apply opens up? So it's on my calendar, it's on the director's calendar, and we will do, do that application and get that submitted so that we can take advantage of that. So that will make, that will help to balance this budget. But as we go through, you know, there's additional items on our sheet that, that I mentioned before, the Google document that then makes its way, the, the grid that makes its way into the update that you all see on a weekly basis. There are items that, that were not on the proposed list or the options that you all saw last month, that have just, as opportunities presented themselves, that, that we've made changes that have reduced the budget for this coming year.
Could you, John?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you refresh my memory? I know you spoke at the last meeting about, you know, the fund balancing, the projections are, continue to go down.
Correct.
What was the point at which the percentage that makes us financially stressed, and then what's the percentage when we reach a certain point that the state could take, I mean?
Okay. So at, once you drop below 10%, the state sends you a nice letter that says, hey, you're below 10%. Are you aware of that?
Okay, so that's, you're basically designated as financially stressed, though, correct?
Not, that's not 10%. Financially stressed is 3%. So they, they give you a 7% heads up. So they say at 10%, they say, hey, just in case, you know, you're not paying attention, you need to pay attention. But then it's 3%, your operating balance is at 3% is when the state considers you financially stressed, and that's one of the reasons the state can take over the district.
John, you mentioned the District Finance Committee?
Yes, sir.
Now, what is the makeup of that committee? Is that just internal, is that our employees, or?
Well, there is no makeup of that committee at this point. It's gonna be a new committee that the-
So that will be a board committee, a board-established committee, I would assume.
Right. And I believe the board, this was one of the things I was tasked with whenever I first came in, but of course, as you know, things have been weird since I got here. So we've got several applications, and there, it's community members at this point. I'm sure we'll include some staff.
Will it have a board member chairing that committee?
We'd be happy to have a-
Since it's a board committee?
A board member involved.
Well, I mean, chairing the committee, because I, this, I assume that this is a committee that I guess we're farming, correct, the board?
This was one of the, if you recall, when we went through Prop S, Prop P, we told the community that we were dedicated on transparency with our finances, and I think one of the best ways to do that is to form a committee, just like we have a curriculum and instruction committee made up of individuals. And I believe we may have put it on the weekend update on, if board members are interested in being in the finance committee, please let John know, and we would put two board members to be a part of that. It's not a decision-making committee at all, it is simply a feedback information gathering committee.
Sorry. My suggestion would be, I, I, I think I missed that as far as board members who wanted to serve, so personally, I would recommend, if, if Bob's interested, he's got finance background, I don't know if Jim has time or Crystal could serve. And then my other suggestion is that we have somebody from our teacher group who serves on negotiations, because then they would be aware, and I believe that, that would be Mr. Martin, Paul Martin, is the lead person on that. And so then there would be that collaborative effort, and I think that would serve well. So I don't know, if, maybe we could do it right here instead of an, an application if either person-
I didn't realize that we had made that decision to farm that committee, because we didn't talk about really the makeup of it and all that business. Here's the thing, any committee we put together ultimately comes back to give recommendations to the school district. And, you know, ultimately, we need to be a part of that process, because we're ultimately the ones that are gonna be held accountable for everything that's done in that community. We just want to make sure that the participation on that committee is legitimate, to make sure that, there are no other agendas out there other than what's serving the best interest of the community in the school district. And there's been a few committees that we've had along the way that haven't necessarily gotten all the information, and they come back with a, a recommendation that is short recommendation. So there needs to be guidance from the board, since it's a board committee, to make sure that we get all the information, and, and there's no agenda going into that, that meeting that the community doesn't know about. Just to give you an example, we did our CSIP, and we put our middle, middle school program together. Obviously, no one was, wasn't mentioned to anyone at that time that this could possibly result in our having to close elementary schools, because we're taking 800 kids out of it. Obviously, the committee wasn't told that it was gonna require a fairly substantial capital investment to increase the size of our middle schools. And so it's important that whenever we have a committee, they get all the information, not just the information that is needed to, to promote a specific agenda, and that's why it's really important for a board member to be on that, in my mind.
I think it's important.
I don't think that there ever was any argument from the beginning about having board members on that finance committee. That, that has been clear. I think it's a smart thing to have a board member or two on that committee, just like any other committee, it's an open invitation at any time. So I don't want anyone to have that impression that that's not what, you know, we were trying to have this different agenda or anything going on here. This is completely to help us on this.
So do I have any volunteers from the board to serve on that committee? Bob, you're willing?
I'll serve too, unless Jim wants to.
No, I'm perfectly fine with you guys serving on the committee. I just want to make sure, this is a board that's being developed to help us.
And, and is it okay if I-
And, and to, and to really support the agenda of the Board of Education and what is in the best interest of the school district. I just want to make sure, if we're really talking about transparency, I believe that needs to happen.
Right. And may I, may I, is it inappropriate for me to ask if Mr. Martin would serve? Because he serves on the teacher negotiation, and that'll be impacted by the budget a great deal. Are you willing?
I'm willing.
Okay. Cool. I'm sorry, I turned off my mic again. Anything else on this item? Any other questions or discussions? Thank you. The next item is staff separations. Dr. Brock?
This item is for the board's information only. It is at-will employee staff separation since our last board meeting.
Can I make a motion?
It's just information.
Oh, it's just, I'm sorry, I messed that.
Okay.
My only comment is, again, I see custodians and subs leaving, and when I saw the list of people that we're hiring, it's less than the ones that are leaving, so hopefully we can fill those gaps. Next item is payment of bills. Mr. Stewart?
So you have in front of you the list of bills to be paid, and I just would request the board approve those as presented.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Next item is Jefferson County School Resource Over, Officer, Dr. Patel, Dr. Cardona, sorry.
So I'm asking the board to approve the attached contract with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office for our SRO that services our schools within the Jefferson County area. One thing I do want to point out, which I think is good news, so last year with the contract, Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, so they had a set rate for the nine, the months that fell in the 2019 year, and then they had a, a, a rate, an increase for the 2020 months for last year. And this year's contract, the rate stays the same, and they actually gave us the rate from the 2019 year, and not the up, not the rate that we were being charged during the 2020. So it is a little bit of a savings to us, and I know that we definitely appreciate our SROs, so I'm asking for your approval.
Dr. Cardona, can I ask a quick question? If by chance, like, let's say there'd be a huge outbreak and all the schools are closed, we'd still have to pay the contract?
I do believe that we, it is a year, yeah, it is a year contract.
Okay. Any, can I get a motion?
I'd just like to know, how many people are we talking about being hired in that program?
So we have one officer that we hire from, from Jefferson County that services just our Jefferson County schools, and then we also have one from Arnold that we, that services our Arnold schools.
Okay.
Any other questions? Second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 All right. The next item on the agenda is 6.3, secondary reading intervention materials.
We're asking the school board to approve the purchase of reading intervention materials for middle and high school for Wilson, from Wilson and Savis, for a total cost of $3,674.16 from the CNI textbooks ELA budget.
Is this part of the, I remember we stopped all extracurriculum from being purchased, that was part of the budget cut. Is this part of that?
This is within the amount of the reduced budget. So this was in the-
Okay.
Reduced amount, it's not over the, the budget that was approved.
Any other questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion, please?
Does this include the Learning A to Z?
No, that's on the next item.
That's a separate one, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is, Declan, you're up again, Learning A to Z.
So we're asking the board to approve the purchase of Learning A to Z resources for all K through three classrooms and two sped teachers per building for a total cost of $32,885.50 from the CNI Purchase Services ELA budget for 2022. This was not originally in the previous budget, but it's within the amount that was allocated for phonics amounts, and we've actually swapped the expenditures each, the district was paying for STAR and AR out of a CNI budget, and buildings, most buildings were paying for Learning A to Z out of their instructional funds, and we've just reversed the position of those two things, so that Learning A to Z will be paid for out of the CNI budget, so it will be available in every classroom, including in the FOX Virtual Academy for every student. And then buildings that want to use, continue to pay for STAR and AR will pay for that out of their local funds.
I know at my house, we've been using Learning A to Z all summer long. It's a really, really good program for emerging readers for sure, and boy, I'll tell you, I encourage every parent that has access to that to take advantage of it, because it's really effective, and it could help us, keep us from falling behind in reading with that lower group. So I, I move that we purchase that.
I second that.
Go ahead.
I, we used RAS also, and it was very helpful.
Does that, is that include the Learning A to Z, Reading A to Z, and the RAS program?
So Learning A to Z is the name of the company, and they have about eight software programs. This includes RAS Plus, which is the Reading A to Z and RAS Kids components of that.
The buildings that have already paid for this out of their building fund, will they be reimbursed for this?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the last, the next item is the DESI Career in Technical Education Performance Based Grant. Declan?
So we're asking the board to approve the, the, accept the Career in Technical Education Performance Based Grant for 2020, 2021 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the amount of $63,602. This is a 100% grant, but it's a reimbursement grant, so it would mean that we would have to budget an account line that would include the $60,000, and then when we've paid that amount, then DESI would reimburse us that amount. But it does require board approval in order for that transaction to happen.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
So comments? So the reimbursement, would that occur in this fiscal year, or the following?
It would reoccur as soon as the, the expenses are incurred, and we intend to expend that money right away so we can re-equip school labs.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Yes.
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 The next one is ALC Contract, which is related to alternative transportation. Declan?
We're asking the board to approve the contract extension and amendments with ALC Schools to provide alternative transportation solutions for homeless and foster care students. We had a contract with them during the last school year, we're asking for you to extend the contract, and to accept the amendments to the contract that have to do with wait times and canceled rides.
Are these only paid if they're used, or is this something we pay daily whether the students use it or not? Like, what if some of these students choose virtual learning and they're not coming to school?
So we, this is a, the, the contract is an agreement that they will provide services and bill us for the services provided.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 The next item is 6.7, Advanced Placement Chemistry Textbooks.
So we're asking the board to approve the purchase of Advanced Placement Chemistry Textbooks for Sandgate Learning for $5,272.80. This was included in the, in the budget. It is Title IV funds that are federal dollars that have to be- It is Title IV funds that are federal dollars that have to be spent distributed on certain items, and these AP chemistry textbooks qualify. With the revisions to the AP exams and curriculum, we had to purchase an updated resource so that students would be prepared for the exam.
Okay. Any questions? If not, can I get a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
The next item is Fox 6.8, Fox Retiree Substitute Pay Rates. Dr. Brock?
The board wanted to discuss and possibly motion to set the retiree substitute pay rates for the 2021 school year. So we've included the data from the increased retiree pay rates, and we've also attached the 2019, 20 substitute pay rates document.
I think this is an item that we probably need to discuss, and I apologize, I don't have the attachment in front of me with the actual rates. I believe retired teachers get, oh, there it is.
I can share it.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind.
So a retired, a retiree teacher was making $120 a day as opposed to a non-retiree, a non-Fox retiree at $95 per day. For substitute administrators, a Fox retiree was making $240 a day to a non-Fox retirees, $190. And then for nurses, those rates match the retiree and non-retiree rates of teachers.
My, my thought was, the reason I wanted to be put on the agenda for discussion was because we're, you know, it's, it's, we always have difficulty getting subs, but with COVID, it's going to be even more difficult. And last year, I know you had data on the impact of the increase that might have shown that it didn't have that great of an impact, but we didn't go to school all year. So my thinking is that this would not be the time to cut those pay rates. And I know Michelle had contacted me, she said it, well, with this, she can vote, but it's very difficult for her to speak in the, in this format. So she wanted me to communicate to the rest of the board, and I think she actually emailed everyone, that it actually might be a time to consider increasing payroll rates for subs anyway. So that was her thought. And I just wanted to put it out there and see what other people thought. You know, I don't know if, with COVID, if that's going to be enough to attract people to, to come and sub anyway. I think the people that sub do it because it gives them a purpose and they want to do it. I don't know if it's necessarily about the pay, but I think if you're a retiree, recognizing that you worked in Fox and you're familiar with our schools and our people might, is an added incentive for people to be here, and valuing that by giving them a slight increase. So it's just up for discussion, and then we can.
Just as a point of clarification, the data that, that was provided, it does only go through March, so that we're comparing apples to apples. So it goes through March this year, but I also cut off the 18, 19 data at March.
The only, the only, Kelly, the only thing that you need to consider is that the issue of COVID started becoming an issue in the community right after Christmas. And I know there may have been some retired teachers that were, because of the unknown factor, that maybe didn't work quite as much. And, but here, here's my concern. If you cut that rate, if you, the response may be, well, heck, we're not going to do it. So we may lose 20 subs. And I think that, that's where the bigger danger is. This is not a time to be cutting that rate, in my mind, because you could possibly alienate, and you have like 44 substitute teachers that were retired teachers, you can alienate that group, and they would say, well, what the heck, I'm just not going to work this year. Why risk, why risk it? I don't know. That's just my thought.
Kelly, how does our rates compare for regular subs to the other districts?
They are comparable. They were comparable when they were set a few years ago, and I don't think they've changed much in the area, with the exception of, I have heard of some districts considering larger increases to attract subs from other area districts and things like that, because we, I mean, all districts already have a hard time finding subs. And with COVID, it's just going to be that much worse. So, you know, some are doing whatever they can.
Right. I heard that also.
Well, I, I heard, I read in the paper that Rittner is paying $130 a day.
How much?
$130.
Or any sub?
Because they're anticipating the, of course, they're not going, I think they're doing virtual the first semester and then hybrid, the first quarter, hybrid the second, and then all in the third, depending on the numbers. But.
Nisha, didn't we, aren't you doing something with teachers' assistance and all of that too, that they're going to be able to sub? And then I know there's a lot of interns and student teachers getting ready to come in, and we're working really hard. And I, I hope, if Kelly knows that, you know, working really hard at getting those people enrolled to do that also.
Yes, we are.
Just to follow up to what this chart indicates here, is, I guess I've been particularly sensitive to bus driver salaries and our ongoing quest to hire bus drivers. Have we done anything with their rate increases to just attract permanent bus drivers?
For the substitutes?
No, not the substitutes. I'm talking about just everyday bus drivers.
We did adjust their pay scale. Was it just, it was last year for this current, or this past year. It was changed from 25 steps to nine steps. And so we have made some changes in that area.
I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, the need for substitute drivers. If, if, maybe if the regular day-to-day drivers' salaries had been, are, might have been increased. I don't know if it has or not, but that might reduce the need for substitute drivers. And so I don't know if we've done anything with the, the regular driver salaries or not for this year.
For the upcoming year, no, we haven't.
Okay.
Are they frozen?
Any, any other discussion on this item?
Yeah, I just asked, are they frozen?
Only if they're outside, like, if they're already being paid more than what step nine is, those individuals are still at their same rate. But if, as long as you're on a step, you're not frozen.
Okay. The item we have before us is discussing the substitute pay.
Michelle, I don't know if Michelle can hear me, but she had talked about this.
Increasing the rate.
What does Windsor pay their subs at this stage of the game? Maybe Michelle knows that. I don't know.
It says 85 on her note to us.
85?
Her email said.
85.
I think the Jefferson County districts were comparable. I think where, it's higher is St. Louis County.
It says Melville 96, Lindbergh 95, Windsor 85, Fox, she's got 90, but it's 95.
Is this something that we could maybe look at in August and see how things are going? And then we could have that discussion about increasing that sub.
Well, but if we want to hire people, I think we should, I mean, we've, we've got to get on that now. So if we're going to keep it the same, or?
Are you talking about bus drivers or subs?
No, we're, we're.
Our sub pay.
I move that we go ahead and keep the, keep the, the rate that we had last year for our substitutes continued on to this year.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to keep the sub rates the same as they were last year.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Okay. The next item is Employment Modification Group A.
We're asking the board to approve the attached modification. This was brought before the board last month, but there was an error. So we're just correcting that.
Can I get a motion, please? Second?
And Ms. Yount will need to abstain from this.
Can I get a second? Did anybody say anything? We need a second for the motion modify, somebody, there was a mistake on somebody's pay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Abstain. Is, let's see. Stipends Group A.
We are asking the board to approve the attached stipend, and Ms. Chamberlain will need to abstain.
Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Stipends Group B.
We are asking the board to approve the attached stipend, and Mr. Grunwald will need to abstain.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay. Donations to the district. Dr. Patel?
We're asking the board to accept the donation of a $7,000 memorial to, that would be placed in Simpson Elementary School in memory of Richard Simpson. And I do want to thank publicly Judy West and Mona Hancock. I know they've been working really hard to put this together. So thank you to them, and we ask them for a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item is Consent Agenda Curriculum Human Resource. Dr. Brock?
We are asking the board to approve all attached higher stipends and modifications.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The next item is, this is a second reading and adoption on the policies.
Yes, we are requesting that the board approve all attached policies. These were brought for a first reading at our May board meeting, and this evening they would be for a second reading and adoption.
And I, I would want the board to note that the one policy is separated, and it'll be voted on next. Okay? So this is, this is all the other ones.
I have a question. I just, on, on the policy IG AEB, the sexual health instruction, are parents notified about this, and do they have the option? I mean, will they be notified?
Yes. Parents are notified about the health units in fifth grade end in middle school and have the option to opt out.
What if their child never brings that note home, or they don't read the email? I mean, is it something that has to be signed for them to do it, or they have to request they not do it?
That's the way it used to be when I was a fifth grade teacher, if they didn't have a note.
That was a long time ago, Jim.
I know. But they had to have a note.
Long time ago, Jim.
Go through that process.
Do you know Dr. Gilman by any chance?
Yeah, I think it's just the communications are sent home, and if they want to opt out, they can opt out. I think it's like a.
They don't have to have permission?
No, it's kind of a, yeah.
Okay.
Any other, can I get a motion on these policies?
Make a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is the second reading on policy DGF Purchasing. Dr. Brock?
We are asking the board to accept DJF for a second reading and adoption. This was brought for a first reading in May, and we were asked to pull this item out separately for discussion.
Yes. And one of the reasons that I requested that this be pulled out separately is because it changes the limit on the amount of funds that would have to be expended before there's a bid put out. And it increases it from a limit of 25,000 to 50,000. And so I thought the board might want to have some discussion on that. So in other words, if, as I understand it, if there was an item that was at 50,000 or under, it would not have to be sent out for bid.
Why are we changing that number? I mean, for small businesses in town that like to have a chance to bid on work, they, I worry that they may feel like that they're not being given the opportunity to do work in the district. And at $50,000, that's a pretty significant amount for especially small businesses. I would, I would be, why are we doing it? Why are we changing it?
My understanding is that something came from MSBA, but I'm not sure.
Well, I think, I think it's a bad idea from MSBA then.
So the, my understanding is that this, it's, it's updated because of House Bill 604 from 2019 that changed the state limit and increased it to $50,000. And I think that's, I don't know how long the limit has been, $15,000?
It's 25.
I think it's been that.
Well, our, our policy reads 25, as I understand it.
The state limit was 15, and I don't know how long the state limit's been 15, but I imagine it's been quite a while. And so this is probably just to deal with inflation and make it that, okay, it's now 50,000. And that doesn't mean that we don't have to price shop.
Right.
And that, it just means when the official bid has to be, you know, an official RFP process and bid has to go out.
So I was in, under the impression it was 25 and not 15.
So there's, there's two pieces to that. There, 25,000 is must-have board approval, and it used to be 15,000 had to have a competitive sealed bid process. This policy says that anything over $3,500 needs to be competitively bid, and anything over $50,000 has to have the publicly announced and then collection and opening of the sealed bid process.
Do we have the option to leave it the way it was?
Yes.
Can I just not make a motion?
Yes.
Can I make a motion? We'll leave it at 25,000. Carol, we just don't even need to make a motion.
Oh, we just leave it as it is.
It just dies for a lack of a motion.
Okay. All right. The last item is 9.1. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.